...around 6:30, so if there's anything you don't want Andy to hear, get it out before 6:30. I'll extend the same offer that I had last week, and that is, is that I have an order. If any of you have a specific need, Chris, to go first, then we can take anybody out of order. And seeing that we only have one need, we will start with Mr. Bylow, so that he can get to his next function. So the floor is yours.
All right. So what I'll do is I'll just quick highlight 2019 department goals and where we stand, or where we finished with those. It was a successful 2019 from a goal standpoint. We were able to achieve all of those goals, which most notably, the last one is significant. But real quick, the update established a recreation department policy manual that has been updated, and we have brought all the different policies, various pieces that were involved in that document have been updated and then brought into 2020. So that is now available for anybody that would like to look at it. The finalized the recreation master plan update that was approved, and that is now been, was approved last spring. So we are in the full throngs of moving on forward with the recommendations from that. The revamp of programs and events, we had a successful 2019 in regards to several of our programs went through sort of a re-hall, or an over, or a change over in regards to the structure of them, along with some details that changed from 2019 from previous years. And we were excited because every one of those seemed to have a positive reaction from a response from the community. So things like summer day camp, summer concert series, those things had a change in their format from 2019, in 2019. We rebranded the department. We came out with a new logo. We went back to reemphasizing the wellness component in all of our programs, and all of our literature, and all of our posts that we, or information that we share. And then the final one is the continuation of the 501(c)(3). I'm pleased to announce that that has been moved forward. And today, actually, I was just sharing, we received the employee identification number, so that process has started. My expectation is by the end of, or my hope is by the end of this month, we have everything in and finalized. And I've told the individuals who will be serving on that committee that I expect that we'll be meeting for the first time in probably mid-February or so to get started.
Do we need to do anything at the town board level to approve? Or look at it?
I imagine once it probably, once we get the actual final number, or final information forward to the friends, I'll probably bring it back. And if the town board decides, you know, that it's something we want to do formally to recognize, I'm not sure if it needs to be, but if so...
It doesn't require, doesn't require any legislative action by this board.
Okay, that was what I was asking.
So. And my hope is that, you know, in 2020, it's going to be more of an education piece, probably, not only for the board, but also for the community in regards to what it is and what kind of, what kind of funds we're going to be looking at.
Right, what kind of opportunity there is for the community to...
Ideally, the first, as I shared with the group, the first sort of real target areas is to look at some of the grant opportunities, especially local, that are going to be available now to us, things even like the Greater Rochester Health Foundation. We can utilize the friends to be able to kind of go after some of those grants, or they can go after some of those grants.
So it would be, it wouldn't be you?
Right. It'd be the friends group. And it's, there's seven, seven individuals that are on there. I think it's a good mix of, good mix of community people.
Can we see a list of them, just to know?
Yeah, I can get you a list.
Just so, you know, if we run into them or something?
Yep. So that's where we were with 2019.
You should know all.
I'm sorry, I just don't want to be...
In regards, and Chris, the only thing I would just interject is that it might be nice to dedicate a little bit of the next brochure, if you haven't already thought about that, to just do a little blurb in there, and then maybe leading up over the next couple that, as we educate.
We did one in the brochure that just came out for winter, basically saying that that's, you know, it's going to be formed in 2020. My goal, or my hope is that because of the timing of it's pretty good, so that as we plan that summer brochure, we'll have some more detail that we'll be able to promote.
He agrees with this letter, too.
Yep.
Sometimes people, they look at that more.
So, 2020 goals. The couple of these are actually directly result of the master plan update that I mentioned earlier. The first one is a detailed community athletic field and indoor space assessment. We're going to include private as well as community school space. What we're looking to do with this is this is actually a document that was done back in 1995.
Yep.
So, but at that time, it was strictly for outdoor space. It was strictly athletic space. So what the thought was is because of the amount of requests that we receive, and we know the community is receiving for indoor space as well as outdoor space, is to update, basically do a benchmark, is to see what's in the community. How many, how many athletic fields are there? How many baseball fields are there? Softball, tennis court, pickleball courts, the whole gamut.
It has been done since 1995.
1995 is the last version I can find.
Really?
And then, and then what we'll do, and there's pieces to it within, like different master plans have been updated.
Right, and the master plan, there's always...
It hasn't been compiled into a single report since that one. So our thought is rather than have to go through multiple pieces, have it all into the single. So we have a better idea. So as it ties into number, the fifth one that I'll get to, it'll tie into that piece. And it is amazing taking a look at it, reading that previous document as to how much things have changed. But in several areas, how much has still stayed the same, especially in regards to needs. Second one that we're, we've already started is the adult program expansion. And again, that was a master plan sort of focus. We've identified as part of our program improvement that the adult section of our programs really is the area from a community need that needed to be addressed. So we've started that, and we are off to a good start, because the winter-spring brochure has 30 programs that are new, that are new to the adult section. So that's a pretty significant start, and we'll continue to add to that. And there's different things that we've got planned throughout the years.
Are they deer, or are they something else?
No, they're adult. Actually, deer is rolled over. What we have done is we've taken some of the deer instructors, we've offered it to them, that if they'd like to come in and teach some, you know, adult programs, I mean, not that deer aren't, but if they want to come in and teach some adult programs, we have several instructors who are going to come in and teach similar programs, but sort of geared a little bit differently.
Good, but it seems like younger people, under that age of deer, it's not to go to deer, so...
So I'm excited, the fact that, like I said, and there's several things that are planned throughout the rest of the winter-spring that we call pop-up programs, that are just going to pop up, because one of the things that we found through the master plan was that that sort of clientele wasn't as committed to signing up long-term for programs and being involved in a seven or a 10-week program versus just going once and being done. So we've got some pop-up programs that are going to be coming out this winter and spring. Goal three and four are just, what I'll say, are going to be updates. So they're sort of together, even though they broke apart here, but they, they're very similar in the fact that the 10-year Town of Penfield and Penfield Central School District intermunicipal agreement that we have that basically outlines field use, building use for both the town and the school district is up. So that has been identified to redo that. There's several things in there that will probably change in regards to the wording, and some of the things have changed in regards to usage. So that piece will be, be updated, as well as the community locker room or pool agreement. So that will be, that will be changed in 2020 to make it current. The fifth goal that's on there sort of goes back to what I was saying in that first one, and that's begin the process for a community center facility plan. As recommended through the master plan, start that process from identifying both needs and interests from the community, holding community input, staff input, current program needs, looking at possible locations, whether that's existing or new, and then start to investigate what, what some of the potential costs and some of the potential impact on the community could be. So sort of get that started. I don't anticipate that goal getting, sort of going until probably early summer, just because of the timing. We'll probably look for some things over the course of the summer, then heavily into the fall, but...
Are you talking internal, or do you want to have a committee like for the master plan?
It'll start as an internal, and then from there, it'll probably look to whether or not we actually look out into the, to the community for some residents. But we're going to start from an internal process.
Are you going to talk about the community center staying with the library?
That'll be on, that's on the table. Again, it's, it's sort of going to be what we looked at several years ago, is, you know, is the community center that is where it is now, is that, you know, is it best suited to be expanded, or converted over to strictly a recreation facility? Library off, or is it a library? And so everything will sort of be on the table, and sort of put that information back together.
I like that. I want to be a part of that in some fashion, because, you know, liaison library board.
That one will be the most length, the lengthiest and probably...
You're also liaison to community service and recreation.
I know.
Okay, just want to make sure that...
But he knows that, I'm just adding to the other...
Okay, all right.
Yeah, but that one, that, that goal will most likely be the, like I said, that will carry over into 2021 for sure, too, and beyond. And then the last one that's listed on here is improvements to customer service. We're obviously starting that with extended office hours, but this goal is actually going to extend a little bit more to have things like additional, or improved signage, additional and improved communications, both internally and externally with our residents. So it's got several pieces that we're going to, we're going to sort of tag onto it. The first thing that we're doing, obviously, is that extended service hours on Thursday nights, which begins next week. So we'll see how that goes, and we have a six-month program that we've laid out for that. Should be interesting to see what kind of a reaction we get for it. So those are the, those are the five, four or five goals that we have for 2020. Questions on any of those?
Those are big goals.
Yeah. It's a good group. I mean, what we've been doing the last couple of years is we've sort of been identifying people within the department that have sort of an area that, an expertise that they can sort of have it, and that's, that's worked well. So we've done the same thing for 2020. Regards to change in resources, et cetera, the only thing that I'll just highlight there is obviously, we have a bit of a restructure in the department as we go through 2020 with retirement. So we'll have a different department structure by the time we get into the summer in regards to people in the positions within, within the department. So it's really the only change, but looking forward to 2020.
Well, have you identified anybody to run the parade? Because usually around now, you're already starting to think about...
We have. We've actually, we've already started reaching out to bands and finding out and get people booked in. So Lanann, because of the timing of her retirement, a lot of that will already be set, similar to a lot of our summer programs will already be sort of scheduled. And Andy will actually be overseeing the physical parade this year with, along with, my expectation is that the new person will come in, will sort of be trained through that process with Andy. Andy's got a familiarity of running parades from Pittsburgh, so it's not like it's going to be anything that he's not familiar with, so...
Sounds good.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about that at all.
Questions for Mr. Bylow?
About anything more, going to happen with the summer amphitheater program? I mean, you tried something different last year, it seemed to work.
It was beyond successful last year. The, I mean, granted, I always got to sort of be careful, even though our numbers were so much higher last year, we also had the perfect weather last year for our concert nights, which obviously drives whether or not people are going to be there. I think going to a single night, going to the Tuesday night, created a level of consistency that people appreciated, and they knew Tuesday night, this is where you go to get your concert. And I guess you could say it lessened the chances or the probability that we're going to have a rain out, because we only had one night that we were scheduling on. So our focus is, and we've started the planning process now, actually talked to Andy yesterday, he's got a list already set up of potential bands that he's, he's reached out to. I field probably one or two phone calls a day from bands who are looking to get in, so...
Do you think about food trucks, too, to come along, like last year?
Yep. Yep.
Good. No, everyone I went to was pretty well attended, and people were enjoying it, so...
Yeah, the attendance last year was good. And again, weather makes it, in the, in the bands that are there. You know, we've, I'll say we've got a pretty good feel for what bands will draw the most, you know, the most, the highest participation. If it's, if it's a good weather night, you're going to, you know, you're going to see a pretty successful season, so I'm looking forward to building off from last year. And there was, as we hear every year, there was a lot of people that show up for the first time, but I didn't even know this was back here. So even though it's been there as, you know, as long as it has, it's still new to a lot of people. So that exposure last year should carry over to this year, too.
Any changes with Memorial Day or anything, same?
Same.
Just looking for somebody to speak, or is she all set?
I think she's all set. Believe she's all set.
Great.
Okay.
Things sound good. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Bylow.
Appreciate it.
I look forward to seeing you next Wednesday at 6 o'clock to go through your other colleagues. Go out and call some priorities.
Thanks, Chris.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Thank you. All right, we'll move, we'll move on to, and this is going to be a little bit of a, of a tag team, because there's a few items of overlap between finance and personnel, but we'll start with Barbara first.
So you have the list of accomplishments in front of you, and as you see, each year it's kind of the same accomplishments and goals for each year. As far as the budget, we're wrapping up 2019 now, our final expenditures and revenue postings. Our auditors will be coming in February. Once again, I expect a clean audit, I expect everything to go well. We had some, as you know, we had some different Gatsby pronouncements this year that we had to make some adjustments for, and that all went smoothly, and the auditors were very happy with how it was handled, so that's a good thing. 2020, we held that rate, you held the rate at $2.78, so we had a very, very successful budget development, and the adoption, Tony's presentation was spot on.
Yeah, he'd be good. Good substitute for you.
Yes, he did, he did, he did a fantastic job. So, you know, as I said, we'll continue with the same thing. We'll be making sure all the accounts are in line as we go along through the year, just as we did in 19. The department heads are always fantastic about following along and making sure that they get their quotes, and if they have any questions, they, you know, they certainly don't hesitate to pick up the phone and call me, or call Amy, and, you know, that's been great through, through the years here. Banking wise, we will continue, we started that relationship through M&amp;T with Wilmington Trust to do some investing. 2019, we had a good investment year, but obviously, as we all know, the treasury has kind of gone down since then, so we actually are going to be looking at some other investment opportunities in 2020. We have a meeting coming up with a representative from New York class, which is kind of another option for governments, which a lot of other towns have, have done, and Penfield actually did it many years ago. And then as things, as interest rates fell, you kind of get away from it, so it's kind of cyclical, so we're going to bring that back up again. As I had mentioned about purchasing and expenditures, we, you know, the department heads, I couldn't ask for them to be, you know, any, any better as far as how, how they follow procedures, and so it's great. So that, that I anticipate continuing to go really well. Chris had mentioned about the Friends of the Library establishment, and prior, right before we came in here, we talked about it a bit, and I had mentioned to him about just getting a little direction from the auditors, because as we know with the Friends of the Library, completely separate entities, you know, never the two shall be mixed. So I just wanted to clarify that with him, so I think we're going to circle back probably in February, just so he gets a little more direction on how separate everything has to be. So kind of good that we talked through that earlier. As far as our insurance side, we had really great progress, and this is thanks to Tracy as well with our workers' comp. We joined that alliance, and our rates of, we're actually paying less in 2020 than we paid in 2017. So that's been, you know, a very positive thing, and that has a lot to do with, knock on wood, we haven't had any major claims, and we also, the disposition of the claims has, has gone really well. So that's, we're hoping that will continue. And then that's the risk management side, and that's kind of what Tony had alluded to, that it's kind of a combo effort. We, the safety committee that we have, that we meet monthly, we're going to, we'll continue to do that. I facilitate that committee. And what we've tried to do over this past probably two years is kind of incorporate with HR and safety to have it not just be all about mandatory safety training and things of that nature, the bloodborne pathogens and the things that we, you know, do annually. We've kind of expanded it to be wellness-related, and also just kind of employee holistic approach. And Tracy, I know, will speak to that a little bit, kind of about the calendar idea?
Yeah, we formulated, this year formulated a specific calendar, and like as Barbara said, it has, you know, a little bit of safety and, you know, the trainings. It started out, you know, purely as kind of a training calendar, but then, you know, definitely had a, had a solid dose of the, you know, bringing wellness into it on a couple of different fronts, whether, you know, we've dedicated a month to kind of financial wellness, where we'll bring in, you know, people talking about our HSA accounts and, you know, from deferred compensation. So a lot of more kind of making the most of benefits, and accomplishing that mandate, all the mandatory things that we need to, but also, again, to try to, you know, engagement. But coming up with a, with a calendar, so from year to year, it's not, oh yeah, we have, it's not as much of a scramble, but it's, you know, it's definitely more thoughtful and proactive about what month covers what, and, you know, how can we tweak things this year to cover? So it has, it's, it's been good to be able to kind of formulate, you know, kind of formalize that, that annual calendar.
And I have to say, this past year with the safety committee, the members that are on it, we have Bernadette from the library, Lanann from REC, Tracy obviously from HR, we have a representative from our insurance broker, Scott, who actually left, will be getting a new one this year. And then we have Eric Tate, Joe Perkins, and obviously Tony. It's a great mix, and this year we were really engaged, and we actually did meetings not only here, like we normally do, but we went over to REC, we went to DPW, we went to the library, and we had, those department heads kind of lead us through the building and show us, like places that the majority of us would never have gone, like down into the basement, and, you know, Chris showed us where all the storage is, and just so we could kind of assess, are there any safety risks that maybe people who work there on a day-to-day basis wouldn't necessarily notice, but a fresh, you know, fresh set of eyes? So I think people found that very interesting. We did, we also developed a form for all the employees to kind of do a workspace assessment, so their own desk and what have you for ergonomics, but also like your lighting and everything like going in and out of the building, and are there things that can be improved? And, you know, it was a pretty quick checkoff form, but, you know, then we had people, we said, you know, please write in comments, and several people did, and it was, you know, it was things that, as I said, that maybe we don't even notice, but somebody's like, oh, this, this should, you know, this light is out, or this is a little too high, right? You know, it's hard to find to lift this. So I think that's been, we're trying to be a little more, as Tracy said, proactive, but also engaging the employees for a lot of feedback as well. So I, you know, we'll be kicking off this year on the 28th, so I'm looking forward to what the committee wants to do as far as, you know, some new initiatives and work with HR, and kind of approach things from that aspect. So that's kind of like accomplishments and goals blended together for, for finance. And then I don't have any changes for, for my staffing, thankfully, and, you know, we'll continue with Logix. We've, we still continue to have that program kind of be made to work better for us. It's, it's come a long way in the past few years, but we still have tweaks and puts and takes, but it's definitely come a long way, so much happier with it. And, you know, we'll continue to train on, through GFOA and, and on the governmental, federal level, and the New York State GFOA, which is another, you know, great resource for, for me personally, and for, you know, people in the finance office, that they can get a lot of information. We start working on the, I believe, with the 2021 budget, is not too far off. Now, Tony will be sending out his letter in May, so that call for the budget letter. And one of the things that we've really focused on, too, is kind of long-range planning, so that's something that we do, as we meet with the department heads, you know, don't just look at the next year, look at the next few as much as you can, just like, you know, you guys do at budget cycles time, too. So that'll be very important, once again, to make sure that we're, you know, not being short-sighted on any, on any of the expenditures and infrastructure. So that, that's about, that's about it for me.
Questions, comments for Barbara?
Yeah. Thank you.
All good?
Thank you.
Money in, money in, money out.
Yep, and anytime anybody, obviously, as you know, just reach out to me if you need any more information, or if you want, you know, come in and talk at any time. Always available.
Okay. All right. The second half of, of that will pick off, pick up where Barbara left off, so our HR side of the biz.
Sure. Kind of like, you know, Barbara said, there's not too much that changes from year to year for, with, for us, or what our areas of concentration are. As far as 2019 accomplishments, you know, when it comes to engagement and communications, you know, we did try to do an added emphasis on, again, like, you know, mentioned previously, whether it was through email forums, training, just to get more information out there. And then also, you know, one of the things with an increase and emphasis on that, also recognizing who you're not touching as, as you should. And so we did do, I've started to join the supervisor on his monthly meetings for DPW, because they, you know, besides office staff and the foreman, they don't have, you know, they're not part of our email communications. So a lot of times, you know, even though in a lot of our emails, informational emails, we do say, you know, please post, but it's by a time clock, they're either hurrying to get in, or hurrying to get out, they're not really stopping to. So started, like I said, started to join the supervisor to, you know, kind of reach them better. We've also, on a couple of different topics, we've sent some of the HR staff over there to explain different initiatives, or, you know, especially on the wellness front, or, you know, benefits-driven, to make sure. So I think that, you know, that kind of added little emphasis and concentration, you know, to make, to, like I said, get to who were not, you know, you know, who aren't easily accessible.
So if I could, Tracy, just as an FYI, down in DPW, you know, which is Highway Sewer Parks Facilities, about 90% of our guys there do not have email, town email. Okay, so when Tracy mentions, you know, we post, we try to post and make everybody aware, but again, depending upon interest coming, going, other things going on, and what have you. And then the other 10%, you know, is a combination of office staff, leadership, and then a couple of key people that, that need it for the business that they do. All right. Sorry, Trace.
Yep. And then kind of as far as, you know, ongoing training, you know, we obviously try to keep current with our mandatory, you know, and by mandatory, by my kind of definition, those are what the state or the federal regulations mandate. There are some other things that, you know, the Town of Penfield, although not mandatory on a higher level, we have, and whether that's ergonomic training to make sure that people are sitting, you know, you know, at their workstations, you know, properly to reduce risk, you know, as kind of to reduce risk of injury. So some of the things we have identified is kind of mandatory for us. Along training, again, the calendar came into play this year. But one of the things, too, we're also trying in kind of different methods, and with the assistance of PCTV, which has been great, this year we actually tried to, with, if they were outside groups with their permission, actually video them. So, you know, it's great to be able to catch the people who were there that day, you know, for training, but in case anybody's missed it, we can put that for, and they have been uploaded on the staff-only access to the town's website. And we are also trying something, starting to try something new with new employees, instead of kind of coming to us and watching hours upon hours of training videos on their first day, when it's a lot getting thrown at them, to give them a time, you know, within the first couple of weeks to do this, you know, and sign off. Again, and that's where these taped events come in really handy. So that's, that's been a benefit. Recruitment, you know, we're, being public sector, we're typically stable. This year, I believe we placed nine full-time employees. Our seasonal fluctuation was about 15 brand-new, and that mostly falls within DPW and recreation. The seasonals, we usually bring year after year, but then they kind of age out, they graduate college, so we always, you know, at some extent have to bring in a new batch every year. Also, a couple of things that did kind of couple with some of the, one thing that coupled with training, we did opioid and Narcan training, and that was kind of with the benefit of Monroe County, the sheriff's office, and Huthers Doyle. And also, we did open that up, which was an interesting thing, we did open that up to members of the Penfield Chamber, and also some of our neighboring towns, but we housed it, we hosted. So that was a great event. Another kind of piece of community outreach, Heritage Christian Services, they reached out to us, and they were working with a small number of Penfield High students as far that were in kind of an elective work preparedness, work readiness... were in kind of an elective work preparedness, work readiness program, and we did bring two interns in for a while. We placed one within our building department and one within PCTV. So that was a great kind of, you know, reach out to the community to kind of, you know, have a little bit of a win-win situation. So those are some of the kind of key, you know, accomplishments that we tried for, you know, that we managed to accomplish in 2019. And as far as 2020 goes, like I said, a lot of that is just, you know, building on, increasing those similar types of things, employee engagement and communications is always, you know, we're always looking for ways to enhance communication, again. Some groups are harder to reach, and that we're acknowledging that a little bit more and kind of proactively try to, you know, address some of the boards, town board even, or, you know, you know, the planning boards, they're harder to reach. So again, again, with the training that all employees, even those on boards that have to do to, you know, keep going back and enhancing, you know, what we can, increasing our, you know, third-party resources, you know, trying to do web-based or video-based or things like that. Policies, handbook and compliance, that's always ongoing, we have to stay on top of things. The only thing that I'm aware of that's kind of coming down or is upon us now are from Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration. They're doing a broad federal, some federal changes, opening up a clearinghouse for drug and alcohol, random results for our, basically DOT or employees that have commercial driver's license. So they're kind of formatting that, and it's going to go onto a federal database. So we'll have to do, you know, the types of checks, checks and balances, what we do when we hire a new person, and then we'll also have to make sure, but there's some compliance issues, and so we will be working with the CDL holders shortly on that, so that's the only thing, kind of compliance in the works. Payroll software, you know...
And Tracy, if I may, there is no exemption from many of our folks because, one, they're public employees, or, two, they provide an emergency service like snowplowing and things like that.
Yeah.
They're not exempt.
No, many of these things, you know, there's a lot that comes down, that as soon as, you know, you hear of these, going to be their labor changes or rules and regulations, it's like, oh, please, don't let it be applicable to public employers. This one is, definitely. So this is also, you know, I mean, it is a kind of safety, obviously, with the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration, they are, you know, looking out for the safety, so it is if somebody does test positive and then they quit and go to another employer, this is going to be a way that, you know, that those results will follow them. So there's no really, you know, kind of skirting. You know, right now there are regulations in place where you're supposed to contact their previous employers, but then again, if they're not necessarily honest with their previous employers to you, you can't reach out to them. So this is like mandated reporting then, so it'll be interesting to see how it rolls out. But no, we are, we are not exempt from any of that.
Thank you.
On our payroll side, you know, we're looking to, you know, increase the functionality of payroll system we have. It definitely has some of its limitations, and we run into some issues. We had, Barbara needed a report that sounded really rather simple, and we should be able to pull, and then we were told that they will have to, they will have to customize report, and typically they want $100 for each customization, which we said, no, because your system should handle it, and so they said they wouldn't, but then they turned around and said, well, it's going to take a week to two to get you your results. So I don't know if that was a little pushback when we said we weren't going to pay, but anyway. So also, I did this past year, in 2019, look at a couple different, you know, human resource information services and payroll systems, a couple that I reached out to initially were very, very expensive, so we're trying to see if there's something a little bit more budget-wise that, you know, that we can make some changes and have a little bit, you know, more, more, like I said, functionality to hopefully what we need. And succession planning and recruitment, you know, Bylow mentioned earlier that one of his key employees is looking to retire, so that will be a placement. I'm not aware at any of these, at this time, of any future ones, but that always, you know, runs the risk of, or the potential for, you know, retirements or any other kind of vacancies. There were a couple positions at the budget that we will be over in Department of Public, under the umbrella of Department of Public Works, that we'll be looking to fill soon. And then on, I don't anticipate any other, you know, staffing needs or any other additional expenses over what's already been adopted in our budget. Any ongoing, you know, for HR staff, it's obviously just keeping abreast of, you know, what's going on there in, you know, HR world, labor laws, general office practices, retirement, you know, payroll trainings. When necessary, we try to make the most of some of the professional groups that we belong to and memberships that we have. And as far as identifying any projects that have to relate to other departments, obviously just still training and development and succession planning and recruitment. So that's about it for HR.
Okay, great. Trace, thank you. Questions for Tracy? Everything and anything you wanted to know about HR, which I'm afraid to ask?
Still afraid to answer.
I'm still afraid to answer.
All separately.
Okay. Seeing none? Thank you, Tracy. Thank you, Barbara. Let's move on to Ann Buck and our assessing assessor's office.
Sure. So for 2020, first the big thing is the townwide revaluation. A, I believe, covers that just in a summary, we are at the point where we're done with our field review and looking to send out letters around the beginning of February. That is the big thing. For that, there are needed costs, which was put into the budget. Basically, they are down under A for personnel. We have to contract people in for the informal hearings after the letters go out, and then for extended period of time for the Board of Assessment review. And there will also be two mailings that we don't normally do that would be needed. As I said, they are already in the budget. For 2019, all the goals have been met. My office is pretty much directed by real property tax law. There is an assessment calendar that we follow. March 1st is taxable status date, as the property sits, as of that date is how it has to be valued. The valuation date is in July, one year prior, it is dated, it is valued by that time period of sales. May 1 is the tentative roll. After the tentative roll goes out, the Fourth Tuesday in May, the Grievance Board meets, that's a yearly thing. Anyone who feels aggrieved can go to the Grievance Board. After the Board deliberates and makes their changes, they give them to us, we process them, and the final roll is July 1. The school bill is levied on that assessment roll, and then the town and county for the prior year, for the year going forward is levied on it. So what happened?
Okay. Want to talk a little bit about the other hat you wear?
Ah, IT.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, totally forgot about that.
I'm going to let you slip right by on that, Ann.
So all the contracts for IT, for our printing and for our PCs have been managed. We replaced probably about 25% of our computers per year, it's usually pretty much on a four-year schedule. We've just ordered the ones for this year, and they have just been coming in. Other than that, there's nothing major that we will be doing for 2020 that I'm aware of.
And maybe a very brief update on DocuWare.
So DocuWare is a document management system that we started to implement in 2019. Currently, we have put the map scan to DocuWare and re-indexed those maps. It was in an old, I believe it was in an old, not Adobe program, Access program, that wasn't functioning very well. So that was done in, I'd say, the beginning of 2019. Currently, we will be going from office to office to address needs for not only retention but also document flow, to have them work between offices. Currently, we're working with HR. I think you are first person for workflow.
Any pics?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Ann. Questions for Ann, either on the computer side? And, you know, Bob, as the newest member, has had the opportunity to get somewhat involved in the computer side of things, and we're dotting those i's and crossing those t's. It just doesn't, is, seem to be as easy as pulling back on a couple of board members and plugging in a couple of board members, so, but we're making progress on that, get that all straightened out, so thank you for your patience on that, Bob. And I know Ann has been doing a great job working with Synergy to get that all squared away, so.
I think we are.
Question. And so, just because, just because every once in a while it's just good to tackle a problem with a little bit of humor, Ann sent a note that went to both Bob and Debbie that said, the title, subject line read, "Significant increase in your assessment," which both of them, Debbie responded immediately, and Bob responded to me to say, is this real?
I took it as spam right away. I got it by the...
Yeah.
Coming from the town board.
It's a heck of an introduction.
Welcome aboard, gets better from here. All right, questions for Ann, either on the assessment side or on the IT side?
I think the only thing, Ann, is are you, from your perspective, are you still seeing Penfield as a very hot market for home sales?
So, from my perspective, from what comes in from the county and deeds, yes. I really expect at this point for sales to level out a little more than what they have. We are still seeing sales come in above the listing price out of MLS, and I really expected that to kind of level out. Today, we just, you know, received one that came in over 12,000 more than it was listed for. But most of the houses out there are, you know, either a portion, a small portion, or a large portion of them are being updated before they go on the market. I mean, that is kind of the known thing to do. And not only do we have the increase in the market, but I think having those updates done just helps with that price coming above.
Yeah. I mean, I know a few people who have sold their homes in the last year or so, and, you know, their homes have sold within, one sold within 24 hours, one sold two days later with three offers on the house. And then the other one, just recently, when I say recently, I'm talking about back in, I think, late November, that house, two years ago, sold in the low 300s, and in December, December, November, sold in the 400s. And so, I mean, these huge increases in demand, and people are prepared to pay, as you just said, above what asking price is.
They are.
And within, you know, non-contingent offers and multiple non-contingent offers on the same property.
Right. And they don't, I think the longest, really, that I've seen anything out there, I mean, that can see is an average, you know, may sit 20 days, but that is not the norm. The norm, they are off the market within five to 10 days. At one time prior, I could say that, you know, we talk about what our average assessed value is, and it's probably in the low 200 range. Today, we are seeing that average is probably up around the 280 to 300 range. That's...
In all different price points of homes?
All different price points.
And there's not just one category where that's occurring, it's all different price points?
It's all different.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Hot market, hot market, and doesn't seem to be cooling down, so. All right, ladies, as always, thank you. Thank you for the extra time here this evening and bringing the board up to speed. Thank you for answering all of our questions and looking forward to a real exciting and dynamic 2020. Hoo-ha.
Thank you.
Go team. Go team. All right, we'll take a, we'll take a short break, and then we will get ready for our legislative session and have even more fun this evening.